We do we provide the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on call and order, this is our public meeting on February 22nd. Let's have the rule call. Steph?
Uh, Mr. Cameron.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Vazano.
Here.
Mr. Ward.
Here.
Mr. Ritter.
Here.
Mayor Liscan.
Here. I need a motion to approve the approval of minutes from second, uh, or February 8th, 2024. Motion. Motion by Mr. Ritter, second by Mr. Ward, call the vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. First item of the business, we have swearing in of Newcastle firefighters. Stephanie, I believe you're gonna do this? Okay, our first one is Assistant Chief Joshua Riley. Would you please come up to the podium?
I state your name.
I, Joshua Riley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Assistant Fire Chief.
As Assistant Fire Chief.
An employee of the City of Newcastle.
An employee of the City of Newcastle.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, Josh.
Thank you.
The next one's firefighter George Getway. Mr. Getway. That young man's not getting sworn anything.
I state your name.
I, George Getway.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a firefighter.
As a firefighter.
An employee of the City of Newcastle.
An employee of the City of Newcastle.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, Mr. Getway. Welcome. Our next casual, uh, casual fi- firefighter, Mr. Christopher Lee.
I state your name.
I, Christopher Lee.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a casual firefighter.
As a casual firefighter.
An employee of the City of Newcastle.
An employee of the City, the City of Newcastle.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, Mr. Lee, and welcome aboard. Finally, casual firefighter, Mr. Jamie McVicker.
I state your name.
I, Jamie McVicker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a casual firefighter.
As a casual firefighter.
An employee of the City of Newcastle.
An employee of the City of Newcastle.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
With fidelity.
Okay, the adoption of the agenda, uh, acknowledgement of prepared agenda, consideration of requests to be heard, amendments to agenda, requests to be heard. Do we have anybody making comments? Motion to, uh, motion to adopt the final gen- uh, agenda. I need a motion to adopt the final agenda.
I don't know why you can make such a.
Motion by Mr. Ritter. Need a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ward, call the vote for that.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. There are no public comments. Uh, there are no receipt of written communications. Let's go to fiscal and contractual transactions, request authorization to bid. I need a motion to authorize to go out to bid to sell a property located on East, uh, Locust, Hillcrest Avenue, parcel ID number 02303300. Motion to authorize.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Ritter.
Second.
Second, Mr. Ward, call the vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mr. Liscan.
Yes. I need a motion to authorize one out of bid for scrap metal. Motion?
Motion.
Mr. Ward, uh, Mr. Ritter?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ward, call the vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. Uh, there are, uh, there are no receipt of bids or acceptance of bids, reports of officials, bureaus, commission, city council, inquiry, regular reports, motion to receive and file. Uh, the public hearing for this has been scheduled for Monday, May, March 4th, by the way, at 5:30 PM. This is for City Planning Commission recommending approval of the condition to use request of the Gussie M. Walker Community Outreach to house their after-school and summer program for the underprivileged youth. The property is located general, generally in the area of 205 East Reynolds Street and 1141 South Mill Street in the C1 General Business District of the Fifth Ward. Motion to receive and file.
Motion, Mr. Ritter.
And second?
Ward.
Mr. Ward.
Ward.
Vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes.
On that note, can I make a comment?
You can.
I talked to, uh, Ms. Bonnie Walker about this, or Bonnie, fuck, I'm sorry, uh, early this week, and she's just looking to expand her after-school program. It's getting bigger. It's been a staple in the community for over 20 years. So this new, um, building is a little bigger for her and her needs that she's, uh, looking to accomplish.
She's been doing this for 20 years?
A little over, I wanna say. Don't quote me on that, though.
Give or take.
Yeah, excellent. Do we call the vote for that?
We did.
Okay. Motion to receive and file. Uh, this too has been scheduled for public hearing on Monday, March 4th at 5:30. Uh, City Planning Commission recommended approval of the request of Maria Irene Trimble and Raymond Maglioka for two lot consolidation of 122 and a half North Wallace Street, parcel ID number 03 dash 116300 and 129, 122 North Wallace Street, parcel ID number 03 dash 004,000 to form one lot. The property, the property is located in the R2 Medium Density Residential District of the Third Ward. Motion to receive.
Motion.
Mr. Uh, Ritter. And Mr. Ward, second, it's called the vote. Any comments to that? Call the vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yep.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. I need a motion to receive and file. Um, Lawrence County Planning Department regarding the request of Maria Irene Trimble and Raymond Maglioka for the two lot consolidation of 122, one and a half North Wallace Street, uh, parcel ID number 03 dash 116300 and 122 North Wallace Street, parcel ID number 03 dash 004,000 to form one lot. Uh, the property's located in R2 Medium Density Residential District of the Third Ward. Seems we did this already, but it's on here again. Oh, yeah, it's two lots, I'm sorry. Right. Motion to receive and file.
Motion.
Mr. Ritter, second by Mr. Ward. Call the vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Special reports, we have none. Any city council reports and inquiry, do we have any of that? See. Okay, moving on. Um, we have three resolutions then to be, um, removed from the table and acting upon. I believe there are two, no, yes, there are, there are two. Three, two. Okay. I need a motion to remove from the table, uh, resolution, uh, 2023 dash 178, authorizing the individuals designated by the city charter to enter into property development and lease option agreement approved by the city solicitor with United Way of Lawrence County for the rehab and operation of the former Cascade Park pool. This was tabled at the 9/21/2023 council meeting. Motion to remove from the table?
Motion.
Mr. Ritter, I need a second? Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mr. Rogers, call the vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. I need a motion on resolution 2023 dash 178, and if I make a mistake here, Mr. Miller, please correct. I need a motion to amend the resolution to, to read. That motion, I'm assuming that it is written properly here in this resolution now. Authorizing the appropriate city officials to submit a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Cascade Pool project. Any motion to amend it as it is now read?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Ritter, second by Mr. Ward. Um, the, the grant amount applied for it will be $50,000. So I need a motion to approve this as amended again.
Motion.
Mr. Ritter, and a second?
Second.
Mr. Ward, let's call the vote for that.
Uh, Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. I need a motion to remove from the table, resolution 2023 dash 208, authorizing individuals designated by the city.
Wait, wait, come on, sorry. We gotta go back up and you have to now approve resolution 2023 178 as amended.
Oh, did I, we didn't do that?
You, you, they made the motion and approved to amend it, but now you go, we took it off the table, you amended it.
Okay, I got you. I, I understand. Okay, now we need a motion to approve resolution 2023 dash 178 as amended.
Motion.
Second.
And second by Mr. Ward. Call the vote to approve as amended. Thank you, Steph.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. Need a motion to remove from the table, resolution 2023 dash 208, authorizing individuals designated by the city charter to enter into lease purchase agreement with the Bancorp for a 2023 Ford F350 for the Parks and Recreation Department. This was tabled at the 10/19/2023 council meeting. Motion to remove and, uh, from the table?
Motion.
Mr. Uh, Rogers, second by Mr. Mr.
Ward.
Ward. Uh, this motion to approve. Um, uh, okay, now take the vote for that. I'm sorry.
Um, Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes, I'm reading this. Motion to approve now. This is either a vote down or do not make motion to approve. This truck is no longer available, is that correct?
That's correct. So this, this should be voted down.
Voted down?
Yes.
So that vote will be no?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so we not gonna make a motion to approve, we're just gonna, am I correct to go right to the vote?
You can either vote or let it die.
For lack of motion.
Just take a vote. Call the vote.
Well, we need a motion.
Motion.
Motion, second by Mr. Rogers, and this is a vote, no.
Mr. Cameron.
No.
Mr. Rogers.
No.
Mr. Vazano.
No.
Mr. Ward.
No.
Mr. Ritter.
No.
Mayor Liscan.
No. Uh, and I'm, I'm assuming that this next one is basically the same thing. Motion to remove from the table, resolution 2024 dash 034, authorizing individuals designated by the city charter to enter into lease purchase agreement with the Bancorp for 2023 Ford Super Duty F250 for the Public Works Department. Tabled at this, uh, 20208 2024 council meeting. I need a motion to remove this from the table?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Ritter, and second, Mr. Rogers. Call the vote to remove this from the table.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. I need a motion to, um, approve, uh, we will, uh, to either vote down or do not make motion to approve. This truck is no longer available. So to take this vote, we will, uh, take, uh, a motion to, um, vote down.
Motion.
Mr. Ritter, Mr. Ward, second, second, Mr. Ritter. Call the vote for that.
Mr. Cameron.
No.
Mr. Rogers.
No.
Mr. Vazano.
No.
Mr. Ward.
No.
Mr. Ritter.
No.
Mayor Liscan.
No. Motion to approve under new resolutions, motion to approve, uh, resolution 2024 dash 035, authorizing the individual, individuals designated by the city charter to enter into contract with Lindy Paving for the, for approximately 250 tons, SRL dash L, 9.5 mm super hate, super paved hot mix contract number 2, 2024 dash 01 at the price of $73.25 per ton.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Ritter?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ward. I had no idea what kind of truck that is.
That's actually the, um, pot patch that he uses. It's, it's actually the product.
I see.
Um, and we pay 73.25 a ton and that's paid for out of liquid fuel.
Interesting.
Stuff that's actually cheaper than what we pay. It is. It is over $74 a ton.
Uh, we did the motion to approve for that. Okay, call the vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. Motion to approve, resolution dash 2024 dash 036, awarding the bid of $28,750 for the south timber on city property, contract number 20, 2024 dash 02 to Mountain Run Forestry LLC.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Ritter.
Second.
Second, Mr. Ward. And, um, thi- this is a pretty good thing. If this goes as, as, uh, plan, we can make some money here. And, and, and we can do this at other places as well that we'll talk about.
And just to be clear, uh, Mayor Liscan, that money will go into our general funds, is that correct?
Is, is that?
It's gonna go into the capital.
Capital reserves, I'm sorry. Thank you.
It's excellent. Okay, let's, uh, call the vote for that.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. I need a motion to approve, resolution 2024 dash 037, approving the appointment of Brian Ball to the Newcastle Zoning Hearing Board of Appeals as an alternate for terms expire December 31st, 2024. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Mr. Ritter, a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ward, call the vote for that.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. Motion to approve, resolution 2024 dash 038, authorization to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency under the 2024, um, does that say 20? Oh, yeah, 2024, 2025, uh, Baron Justice Assistant Grant in the total amount of $250,000. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Mr. Uh, Ritter?
Second.
And second, Mr. Ward, call the vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. Motion to approve, resolution 2024 dash 039, authorizing Dawn Enterprises Incorporated to install three messages centers for the Elm Street area project as official signs without permit. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Mr. Ward?
Second.
Mr. Ritter, call the vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. Motion to approve, resolution 2024 dash 040, authorizing appropriate city officials to submit a grant application through the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for fare prey play yard.
Motion.
Mr. Uh, Ritter, second, Mr. Rogers. Call the vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. Um, and that grant amount applied for will be between 140,000 to 160,000 dollars. It's a good thing. Okay, motion to approve, resolution 2024 dash 041, authorizing individuals designated by the city charter to enter into the lease purchase agreement with the Bancorp for a 2023 Ford F250 for the Public Works Department.
Motion.
Mr. Ritter?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ward?
Uh, before we, before we call the vote, just wanted to make sure everybody knows. Um, so with this truck that we've been trying to get for.
Months.
Brian Hykel.
Yeah.
Uh, so he sold, uh, he sold the equipment on municipal, and we put that money down. Um, and Stephanie, correct me if I say anything wrong here, but we put the money down, uh, which means we're financing less, so the interest rate rose a little bit. But the interest rate rising wasn't any kind of, any concern for us because we're still staying below what we had budgeted for the five-year plan, and also it's still a really good deal on the truck, so I sense that.
Brian Hykel makes me very excited when you finally do this. He's been on me and on us. Let's build it, let's build it. So, okay, call the vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Vazano.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ritter.
Yes.
Mayor Liscan.
Yes. Our ordinance on the table, we have one, um, and I'm gonna read it under for final action because, um, people, please know that this, uh, orders cannot be acted on until council provides the enactment date, at least seven days prior to passage. Uh, but I should still read this, Jonathan? You follow the. Uh, sorry. Council Bill 02. We don't need to read. Okay, then we can move along. Okay, for introduction, Council Bill 2024 dash 03, we need someone to introduce and table. Approving the request of Marine Irene Trimble and Raymond Maglioka for two lot consolidation of 122 and a half North Wallace Street, parcel ID number 03 dash 116300 and 122 North Wallace Street, parcel ID number 03 zero dash 004,000 to form one lot. The property is located in the R2 Medium Density Residential District of the Third Ward, in authorization, authorizing the signature of the mayor or council president to be affixed to the set preliminary final subdivision plaque. Introduced to and table will be?
Introduced.
Mr. Ritter introduces. That officially tables it. Call the vote to introduce and table that. Call the vote, introduce and table that.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Mayor Lyska?
Yes. Under new business, I need nominations for the vacant council seat.
I would like to nominate Mr. Eddie Bogart for the set of council seats for the remainder of two years.
Mr. Ward nominates Mr. Eddie Bogart for the vacant council seat. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Rogers. Are there any other nominations? There are none? Are there any comments to this? There are none? I feel I have to make a comment, gentlemen, as you know, on this. And I usually don't write things down, but I just want to make sure I'm clear here. I do need to be making myself very clear. And I want to say how painful this is for me. This has kept me up at night. Again, so painful. I have attempted every reasonable alternative to prevent my speaking on the subject this evening, as my council members know. Yet I must speak out. To accept this goes against every principle and value that I have. And I want council to understand that. The last thing I would want to do here would be to alienate my colleagues. Mr. Ritter has changed his support. He changed his support because he was coerced by loss of revenue in a job if he continued to support Mr. Francis. Government coercion is defined as, and I quote, "threat or use of punitive measures against states, groups, or individuals in order to force them to undertake or desist from specified actions. You are prevented from doing something you wish to do by withholding some resources or by physically restraining..." Of course, that's only unquote. In my opinion, I believe this is exactly what happened. And I have Mr. Ritter's test messages to me explaining exactly this as to why he changed his support from Mr. Francis. He also explained this to Mr. Rosanna. But let me be very, very clear here. I do not blame Mr. Ritter. He has a duty to support his family. Because this happened, Mr. Ritter has been victimized. I do not believe for one second that Mr. Bogart orchestrated this. I know, Eddie, there's no way he would do this. Yet Mr. Bogart benefits from this. He too has been victimized. So, and so too was Mr. Francis. Mr. Francis is victimized by possibly losing a seat that he honestly interviewed for by an unsavory action. I want to let everyone know how much this disgusts me. I cannot, I will not permit myself to simply sweep this under the rug, knowing what I know, that this council has been compromised with the potential of it happening again and again. I want everyone to know that, and my council knows that, I have tried every compromise with my colleagues that I could think of. I begged, I pleaded with council to let this go to the judges. Let the judges decide. Whoever they chose, I would fully embrace as a member of our team. It's clean, it's honest, and to do it that way, to do it that way is clean and honest. But to do it now with this hanging over our head right now, it's dirty. It's tainted. It's not how real statesmen do business, it's not. That compromise fell on deaf ears. I attempted another compromise. I offered a couple third candidates that we could approach, highly professional people, community-oriented people that would be tremendous assets to what we want to achieve. It went nowhere. I informed council that if the tables were turned and Mr. Francis would benefit from this type of coercion, my support would vanish for him in a instant. And if I didn't, you would be doing what I am doing right now. Now, council will not support this. They will minimize what I say here. You're gonna hear every excuse. We have to move along. I agree with that. Mr. Ritter would have changed his vote anyway. Those aren't reasons, those are excuses. How this council can approve this and let Mr. Bogart come into this council under a clause disappointing to me, knowing that he can possibly enter this council in a clear and proper way, and that's through a judge. There's a right way to do things and a wrong way. And in this issue, council chose the wrong way. It seems the power of reason has been lost in this. I sincerely hope that council and Mr. Bogart clearly understand why I cannot just accept this. I want all to know that I have only one priority here, and that's economic development and the betterment of the city. That towers over everything that is said and done here tonight. I take nothing personal here, and I pray that council doesn't either. I will never speak of this matter again. I have stated why I must certainly oppose this. Yet for me, and hopefully for the rest of council, we must together close this issue. I agree, and move on. As we all know here, we have real challenges for us to meet, and the people of this city demands us to confront these challenges together. I am hopeful that after this evening, we can find the virtuous self-restraint to put the public interest before any angry, any angry partisanship. Thank you for listening to that. We can call a vote.
Can I intervene?
Absolutely.
After reading the newspaper article and all the Facebook, social media things, this is what Newcastle wants. They want Eddie Bogart. You know, Eric Francis was on the ballot, and I understand Eddie didn't put his name on the ballot. I worked with Eddie on the CDC. Eddie is a great person, he really is.
I agree.
And thinking of everything with, you know, social media, people coming up with me, you know, whether I'm out and about, you know, people had very... They wanted Eddie Bogart, and that's one of the reasons, thoughts, why I changed my opinion in my vote.
I understand that. And if you would have said that to me from the beginning, or to Mr. Rosanna, I'd have accepted that, but that's not what you said.
Well, maybe the text came off wrong.
I don't think so.
Wow.
I don't think so. It did.
Art.
Yes.
Okay. I... Everybody here knows where my heart was and my head was when it came to this vote. And I think that's the important thing. But it's a vote. And one of the things that we're trying to do here is collectively, is we're trying to get some things done because Newcastle hasn't been in too good of a shape. But we're getting on Act 47 and the whole deal. So we can decide. We can decide if we're going to vote for, vote against. But it's the vote that matters. It's not the beforehand, the talking, and this, and back and forth, and that. That's always gone on. Goes on in House of Representatives, it's the United States, that's the deal. I had to look this up a little, I want to make sure as a former history teacher.